We're ready. Okay. Good evening and welcome to the City of Leon Valley City Council Regular Meeting. We're so glad all of you could join us this evening on Tuesday, September 2nd, 2025, and we have approximately 6:30 in the evening. As you can see, all council members are present, and we do have our city attorney, Art Rodriguez, is not able to be here this evening, but Sarah Kerr from Messer Fort, the law firm that represents our city, will be online. So if any of the councilors have a question, then we can ask her for guidance this evening. So I have asked Councilor Orozco to please join us and lead us in the pledge. Thank you. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hurrah!
Thank you.
Thank you.
You bet. All right. Agenda item number two. We have citizens to be heard, and you have up to three minutes to speak. If you'll just come to the podium, state your name and generally where you reside. We greatly appreciate that. Thank you. Good evening, Ms. Jason, and welcome.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm going to once again read my information that I'd like to relay to you tonight. I'd like to bring up something that happened last Wednesday that most of all of you know about since I took it upon myself to call almost everyone on the council and the mayor separately. Within the span of two hours on Wednesday morning from 7:00 to 9:00, I received multiple calls, actually five calls, five calls from my neighbor, just on my street alone, complaining about a post that they read on Nextdoor, which I hadn't seen at the time, about citations and warrants being given to people who are violating the state mandated law of parking their cars and overhanging their driveway onto the apron. The apron being where both sides of the sidewalk joins and extends out meeting to the street. But they were even more upset about the second part of the post. This part concerned with not being allowed to park overnight on the street in front of their homes. The person who wrote the post stated that she found this information out from a conversation with our mayor on August 22nd. When I brought this to the attention of Mayor Riley, she claimed that she knew nothing about the parking on the street and that it was allowed. But there is a mandated law about overhanging the apron at the end of the driveway. She also explained that she never spoke to this woman who made the post. The point of me bringing this up is that directions given to our police to enforce the laws as they are on the state and local level, such as illegal parking on the driveway apron, over, it seems, the security and safety of our city and its residents is out of line. I believe priorities for the safety and well-being of our city and its residents should come first. Several different posts on Nextdoor by Leon Valley residents have all complained about receiving citations of $127 in the middle of the night. This has seemingly created anger and animosity between the residents towards the police. I am not against the police enforcing any of the laws of our city or the state, but I do believe that giving out these tickets in the middle of the night is reminiscent of when Chief Salvaggio was here. We can never go back, and that seems to be the theme I keep seeing over and over again. Given the size of our police department and the fact that Councilman Campos mentioned to me, the number we have on our street at any 12-hour shift is three. Their time would be better spent at night looking for car break-ins, car thefts, people peeping into windows, trying to get in the backyards, people running all over personal property in the middle of the night, people that have no business walking our streets, speeders, cars blasting loud music, disturbing the peace, et cetera. In other words, keeping the community and its residents safe. This is something that would contribute to the well-being of our community and its safety, more so than the issuing of citations or warnings, because it is wrong for people to have to walk around the cars or even into the street, especially during the night.
Okay.
To conclude, I would appreciate this concern of mine and that of my neighbors be added to our next agenda to give clear direction to our police on priorities. This way, neither the mayor nor the city manager could ever be misunderstood.
Okay.
Next, may I also suggest that the possibility of an online poll.
Okay. Dana, I'm sorry, your time is up, so I gave you a little bit more time.
I just have one.
Okay.
An online poll to our citizens on E-News, the city's website, the city's Facebook page, to list in order, say, from 1 to 10, what they would want and expect out of our Leon Valley Police Department. That way, you would have more than what my street has given as their feelings.
Very good.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I certainly appreciate those comments this evening. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Yornell. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As I look through the agenda tonight, I am able to find two items that I was understanding that was going to be on the agenda, and that's the issue with the city picking up the leftover trash.
Okay, that's the next meeting.
I got the wrong date?
The next meeting, on the 16th of September.
And the other item is the question about the tower.
That's the next meeting as well. Both of those will be it.
Should read more details.
September 16th, yeah.
Thank you.
Well, we had to, yeah, we had to decide, because the agenda's pretty full today.
Was it ever supposed to be tonight?
Mr. Orozco had asked, and he said it could either be the 2nd or the 16th, and because of his flexibility, the manager and I decided to put on the 16th because we have a pretty big agenda, so.
But, Mr. Yornell, I'm not going to let it go. I am going to make sure he comes on to the council, and we'll address it. I know that we have to address a budget. It's going to be a time consuming process, so I totally understand why they moved it to next time.
Thank you.
Thank you for your understanding. Appreciate it. All right. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am. Good evening and welcome. Barbara.
Hi. Yeah, Barbara Costner. No, I'm here to talk about the trees that came down. They keep coming down every time we have a storm. And I live on Forest Cove, but to get into Forest Cove, you've got to go through Forest Dell. It's the first street in Leon Valley. Well, they've come down. The trees there, they're hanging over. My vehicle will hit the top some of the branches. I have to go around on the other side of the street to actually get through with my motorhome, because they're so, the branches are low, the branches are coming down, and it's a hindrance to anybody going down the street, especially if you're going and another car's coming the other way. You can't see. Now, I've been over to City Hall. This was the third time this year. That's why I'm here tonight. And I understand that, you know, maybe a little education, maybe we could just put it out to everybody, you know? I've met people that got a ticket for not parking their car close enough to the curb. Well, I don't know what "close enough" is. I don't know how long the branches have to be before they have to be, and neither do my neighbors. So it would be nice if we could have something, a list of what are these rules, not, you know, go look at ordinance, this and that. You know, how many inches does the grass have to be before it's too long?
Right. I think we've done that before, so, yeah.
I do it about once or twice a year. So I put out a list, code packs, in this lion's roar that just went out, exactly what you talked about this evening. Cut your low branches. We're going to start issuing citations beginning September the 1st.
Right, but it has nothing about how long the parking, you know, rules, rules. What are the rules there?
Right, so I did that two months ago in the lion's roar, and I gave 12 inches for the grass height, junk in the front yard.
I must have missed it, because I usually read all through these.
So I will, I can definitely send you that fact sheet if you would like, if you leave me your email or contact information, or I can put it in the.
Because I've been around to my neighbors and asking them, do you know how long the branches are supposed to be? I can't get through here. There's no way. It's almost like a canopy, and if I don't hit the top, the sides will hit my motorhome.
Yeah. So the fire truck can't get through?
It's also a safety issue for the fire truck, yeah.
City ordinance is 14 feet. Yeah. And like I said, and I started last year complaining about them being too long, and this year I can't even drive past them without them, some damage to my vehicle. So I would appreciate it if that could be taken care of.
Okay. Very good.
And I've got one for no citations and one for citations.
Yeah. But I also had a email, and I think I sent it to Melinda over the weekend, and it was the alleyway where Ms. Costner lives, and they needed it cut because, or picked up because of the storm that we had. So that was, that's separate from what her issue is, so we're on it. Okay. Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Mark Brogley. Yes.
Hi. Thank you very much. My name is Mark Brogley. I had some organized bullet points. I didn't bring them. They must be on the table.
Uh-oh.
I'll see if I can remember. They're organized. Okay. I live at 6100 Rue Des Me, High Point in Leon Valley, and my family moved here in 1974. We've lived in the same house for over five decades. I'm hardly a new customer. My dad died in 2012. After that, I moved in with my mom, just me and my mom, two old people. She just died this year. I'm suddenly a new customer, hardly a new customer, but, well, it's ridiculous. The name is Brogley, my dad, my mom, me. I'm treated like a new customer. You say you want, you say you want this to be fair to new customers. No, it's really not. It's, Leon Valley's going to charge me over $37 every month for one flush a day. Less than one gallon goes down the drain. The highest point in Leon Valley, a half a mile where the sewer enters SAW's sewer system, or whatever it's called, San Antonio Sewer System, they take care of it at the treatment plant. Leon Valley is just charging me $37 for pipes that were put in in the 1960s, and then they paved over the street and built the houses. So I have four bills from SAW's. The first two, SAW's did an averaging. The third bill, I called, I said, why didn't you charge me anything for water? Leon Valley charged me 37, you know, and I've been dealing with it. That's what I learned. Leon Valley's not mentioned on the SAW's bill, but they're the ones that determine the $37, which is averaging me, one person, the most frugal person, the least consumptive, most water conserving person. I got rain barrels, I don't, the only thing that goes down, I don't even need the sewer. But one flush a day, that's less than one gallon, $37, that's outrageous. You want to do it fair, look at my bills. See what SAW's charged me. They charged me $10, the first bill, $10, $10, $10.72 cents for water usage. Second bill, $10.63. Third bill, nothing, nothing. Fourth bill, a few, couple of weeks ago, nothing for water. I use so little, 10 gallons a day at the most. The fair way would be to look at the bills and not average me in. SAW's did the averaging in two months. It was a springtime averaging. Leon Valley's going to continue to overcharge me for over a year until 2026, when that winter averaging period ends.
The winter averages, okay. Yes. So you've sent me a letter, or you've contacted me, I sent you a letter. I thought you met with the city manager, so.
No, David Morales and Melinda both called him. There's nothing we're going to, we're not going to change anything.
No, no, no. David was the one that called me, and he was apologetic, well, it's not me.
SAW's does the same calculation.
No, no, no. SAW's, SAW's did not, does not do winter averaging. They're done. I called them, and I said, why didn't you charge me $10 for water?
Of course, on their sewer side, they do. And so.
No, no. We have Leon Valley Sewer until it goes into a quarter of a mile outside of Leon Valley, downhill, gravity fed, doesn't cost any electricity for the.
But if you were on SAW's sewer, they charged the same.
But I'm not.
Huh?
But I'm not. My sister's on SAW's, she pays $12 or $13 for sewer.
And yours will go that way when you hit your winter average. When, your bill will go back. You're considered a new customer. We've responded to you. There's not another way for us to respond. We're not going to change our policy.
No, no, no. Look at my bills. You know, why does a sewer service, which doesn't cost anything, it's just gravity fed pipes?
Mr. Brogley, I think maybe what we need to do is just make another appointment, go through this again. I don't know.
Nothing's going to change. We can certainly do, but in my.
What you're doing is you're just giving me, well, that's the way, no, you're averaging me with.
But we can't, we can't use this time to argue back and forth. That's not appropriate.
But it's unfair to continue this new customer. That's not the fair, that's not fair at all. It's gouging, because you guys have a monopoly on the sewer, which has been there, it was paid for back in the 60s. It's just a gravy, oh, he's a new customer, his mom's dead, let's just treat him as a new customer.
We still have to pay SAW's for the sewer.
SAW's does it.
Yeah. So we do. We pay him a lot of money every year, so. But anyway, thank you. That's, your time is way up, and I know you're frustrated, and I know you want the policy to change, but the manager says we're not able to change the policy, so I'm not really sure what the alternative is.
There's not a solution for it. I'm sorry.
Yeah, so I'm sorry.
You have to do your average.
Okay. Ooh, okay. Mr. Diaz. Good evening and welcome.
Abraham Diaz, 6014 Kenman Drive. Just a second, I can go with the lady about her RV. I have an RV fifth wheel, and I can't get it into my house without scuffing it. I have full body paint on my RV, it's very expensive, and I already have scratches down the side of it, because I can't get in without hitting trees, so I wish citations would go out to say, cut the trees back. What I'm here for is the Lion's Roar, August, September, 2025 Annual City Council Retreat. And in here, it says here, these were some of the budget items which council has agreed to fund in the general fund for FY '26. Funding the Forest Oak Swimming Pool contract for FY '26, $108,000, plus replastering the pool for $75,000. That is $183,000 of the general fund for a swimming pool. I hope the swimming pool this year made over $200,000 in revenue, because if it didn't, this is money going down the toilet, because that's money should go to those two chiefs that are back there. Again, again, it happened again in my neighborhood. I'm a nosy neighbor. Fire truck was there, ambulance shows up, it says Allied on there, and I asked the chief, what was Allied doing there? Couldn't make the call. Council, it is unacceptable that we have a fire department that cannot make the calls. What happens when one of my neighbors goes into cardiac arrest and can't get seen because we have nobody? $108,000 should not be going to the swimming pool. It should not. This budget season this year has to be looked at differently. She, I think Tina said it, what's the most important part of this council is the safety of the citizens of this, of this community. So when we pick up the phone call or dial 911, we should have a police officer come to the house. We should have the fire department. We should have Leon Valley EMS show up to our house, not Allied, not San Antonio Fire Department. Please look at your budget. This $108,000 should not be going into the swimming pool. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else? Mr. Martinez.
Benny Martinez, Seneca. I don't recall at any city council meeting a vote made to have enhanced enforcement of the sidewalk laws. I know it's a state law, I know it's a city law, but who told the police department to start giving out these citations? I've asked several people here on the council, and nobody seems to know anything about it. So how did that happen? You know, I believe our police should be doing other things. You know, we've had, in fact, my neighbor, Camera, caught people, one guy driving down the street with two guys on either side checking car doors, and all of them holding up a gun. Is that what we want for our city? We need our police to go out there and do that. And I agree with Mr. Campos that we need to get serious on speeding and people running stop signs. There at Seneca, they don't even slow down. They completely run it. I know I've been, I've tried to go through and, you know, I've had to put on my brakes to prevent being hit, so it's just not something that happens occasionally. But, yeah, I think our police have better things to do in the middle of the night than giving tickets for blocking the sidewalk. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Anyone else before we go on to presentations?
I just want to clarify something.
Would you like to clarify something here?
Yes, I'm going to clarify two things. One, I had the police pull the number of citations for blocking of the sidewalk, and in January, they issued 22 citations before the retreat happened. After the retreat happened, they only issued an additional 37. So what happened, I think, is they issued them to a couple of people that posted on the Nextdoor and got upset about it. It's not anything that's changed. They're not doing anything differently. I pulled the number of citations, broke them down from January to February, and then I pulled July and August. We have an uptick in speeding citations being written, passing the stop sign being written, and so they have gone up from about 400 citations to about 600 to 700 citations, but they're not all in the blocking of the sidewalk. They're all increased traffic enforcement. Blocking of the sidewalk is considered a traffic penal code. Nobody on this dais, you cannot make a policy, it is unconstitutional to tell the police officers they cannot write a citation for blocking of the sidewalk. I want to make that clear. So even if y'all come and say, we want, you know, y'all to patrol in the middle of the night, that's still not going to prevent them from writing citations for blocking of the sidewalk. They are able to do that under the Texas penal code. So it, I just want to make that very, very clear. Secondly, I said earlier, one person was against citations and the other one was for citations. I didn't mean it necessarily that way. It's just we have people that really want us to enforce the code, and then I have a handful of people that just want us patrolling and looking for suspicious persons. And so I'm not in disagreement that that's not important, too. The officers should be doing those things, and the way that we know that they're out in the neighborhood is if they are issuing citations and warnings in the middle of the night. Because the other complaint from the council and the community is that they were seeing them behind buildings and taking a nap, or they see them hiding in the bushes. Somebody sent me a message that they were over there at Seneca West in the trees somewhere. And so, so if they're out in the neighborhoods issuing citations, they can't be under trees or not behind buildings. They're, they're out there enforcing the laws of the city and the laws of the state. So I just want to clarify that. I know it's going to be on a topic for conversation. I'll put together the same numbers I pulled this evening for y'all, so y'all can take a look and understand that the citation. But I want to make it clear, you can't issue a policy to tell the police not to issue citations for not blocking the sidewalk, so I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So if there's no further citizens to be heard, we'll move on then to presentations. Presentation 3.1, Presentation and Discussion on the Recap of the Fourth of July Celebration. We have Crystal Miranda, our Community Relations Director, here this evening to present. Good evening, Crystal, and welcome.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Here to present the recap. I know everyone's been anxious to see what the results were. So the 31st Annual Fourth of July Celebration was held on the actual Fourth of July, so Friday, July 4th, 2025. To start the event, we had the Leon Valley Historical Society put on their 5K run, and they had a new route this year, utilize a trail and El Verde Road. We had vendors and food trucks arrive at 4 o'clock. Michael Alanas kicked off the evening at 6:00. We had the National Anthem, 7:15, Finding Friday, 7:45, the fireworks and laser show at 9:30, and the event immediately ended after the fireworks. So here's the fiscal impact. The left here, you have your revenue. So sponsorships, vendors, and small business sponsors, over approximately 500 emails were sent out. And then basically, your big sponsors are your reoccurring sponsors. Leon Valley Storage is your main event sponsor, has been for years now, and they continue to do so, which we're very grateful for. Here are the expenditures. So personnel overtime was a little over $48,000. With benefits, you add to add $12,000 to that, you're looking at almost 60. Setup and staging area was $48,000. Advertisement, $1,500, as approved by council to only spend that much. Entertainment is $28,000, and then miscellaneous $3,000. As you know, bless you, the event budget, the city budgeted $100,000. The city's overtime budget was 50, almost $51,000. EDC allocated budget was $30,000 for a total of 180. So we've spent approximately, Methodist did come in, and so we did finally get their check, and city expended, if you take all that into consideration, $84,000.
Crystal, did you add the $45,700 to the other column? Isn't that an income for the Fourth of July?
So this is what, we can't necessarily call it an income. This is your budget, and then this is what we were able to get as far as like sponsorships and going out there and building relationships.
It just reduces our outgo, doesn't it?
Right. So you budgeted $180,000, but after the sponsorship came in, you only expended $84,000, if you want to take it that way. So that's why at the very bottom, city expended $84,172.
Okay.
So instead of $180. So the reason that we still budget $183 is those sponsorships aren't promised every year. So you have to budget for your full amount that it's going to cost you to run the event. Crystal did a really good job in haggling. We didn't have the tariff charges on the fireworks. She didn't allow them to come in because they weren't on the original cost listing, though we'll be on the next one if y'all choose to do something similar to this. But she was able to get as many sponsorships as she can in order to try to offset the cost.
Oh, yeah, that was great. I think that's the highest I've seen in a long time, yeah.
So we were able to bring that 100, well, she also only spent $142,000 instead of the $180. We did, we tried to manage the extra stuff, and it was rainy that day, so we didn't do the balloon bouncies and some of the other stuff we would normally do, so we kept it to around $142. But with all of the sponsorships she brought in, the total cost for the city would be about $84,000, because the $45,000 will go back into your general fund.
Okay, very good. Yes, Councilor Campos.
I just wanted to point out to my colleagues, you can see on here, the budget is $180,000. So when we reduced, when the city manager reduced our budget by 379, 180 of it was for the Fourth of July. So that, the difference is what, where we've really taken, you know, things from other budgets. But is that a correct statement to say?
Yeah, I think, well, contractual services is down 380,000, and some of the Fourth of July is in contractual services. Some of it's in the operating expenses, so they're not all within the 380, but the majority of it is, so pretty close to me. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Any other questions from my colleagues or?
I do, Mayor. Thank you.
Yes, Orozco.
Crystal, yeah, go back. In the past five years that I've been here, this is the most I've seen being taken by full revenue. Good job. Thank you so much. And refresh my memory again, what was that $600 minus on the refund?
So because we had to not accept all the vendors because of food trucks and the logistics of the site, it was too muddy for them to enter, we had to push people away, and they did ask for a refund, and we did honor that.
Okay, just finalize. I just wanted to thank you. You did an excellent job. This is the most I've seen in the five years, and keep up the good work. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I just had another question about the entertainment, $28,000. So how did that split out between Finding Friday and Michael Alanis? Is that his name?
Yes, ma'am. So I believe it's in a slide here. Did I put it in a slide?
No, I didn't see that in the, that's why I had the question.
Quote it. But yes, ma'am, so everything is kind of, the stage and the lighting, the sound was approximately $20,000, plus the Finding Friday, let me put this up, their contract. We spent a little over 5,000 for their contract. And then Michael Alonis was 2,500. So just kind of everything going all together, the video wall, the lighting, the speakers.
Oh, so in other words, the entertainment was not just the band. See, that's what I was thinking.
Oh, I'm sorry, just the entertainment portion was fireworks, 20,000, Finding Friday.
Oh, the fireworks was in the entertainment. I was just thinking of the music. Okay, gotcha. All right, so that's what kicked it up. All right. Because I was thinking, I didn't think Finding Friday was that expensive as compared to the other band we had before.
If we would have gotten them for three hours, it'd been pretty equivalent to pricing.
Okay, all right. So the fireworks was in the entertainment line. Okay, there you go. That's, that was good. And then, did you have a estimate of attendance? I didn't see that in the PowerPoint.
Yes, so Roca gave us the estimate, approximately 9,000 attended. The peak was 7,500, but when you calculate, not all children have cell phones, and that's where you get your estimate from, is the cellphone data. You times it by one point, whatever, and it's about approximately 9,000, 9,500.
Very good. I know the weather was a little dicey, so that impacted.
Right, so you had half the attendance with a muddy day, you know, so.
But I thought I also read in your presentation that the shuttles were well-used.
They were very utilized, so much so that they requested for more shuttles or larger shuttles because people were just waiting and waiting and waiting to get a ride.
I did not know that. Okay, very good. All right, yes, good job. Thank you. Really appreciate it.
I just want to thank everyone who helped. Dr. Caldera was there with me at 6:00 in the morning, in the boots, mud in the boots type of thing. So it really is only successful because of the team here.
Sure, you bet. All right.
Any questions, comments?
Any other questions, comments from anyone? Okay, thank you so much. Really appreciate it. All right. Then we move then to Agenda Item Number 3.2, Presentation and Direction to Staff on the City's Revised Goals and Objectives. We have Dr. Caldera, our city manager, here this evening to present. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Yes.
So this has been a long time coming.
I was gonna say.
We pushed it back like four or five times. I don't even know at this point. So just kind of a little bit of a recap. The council collectively agreed to revise their goals and objectives. We've taken it back and forth to various town hall meetings and copies with the mayor and council. And the last time we met, they said, "Well, let's take it online. Let's see what the residents that couldn't show up for public meetings have to say." And we got little to no feedback back, to be honest with you. It seems like everybody was pretty happy with the changes in the goals and objectives. And so we did approve and update the mission and vision statement. The mission statement says, "The City of Leon Valley is committed to protecting the quality of life, safety and liberty for all its citizens while prioritizing fiscal responsibility, resiliency, sustainability, and economic development. The vision of the City of Leon Valley strives to foster community that is resilient to challenges, sustainable for future generations, and economically dynamic, ensuring a prosperous and harmonious future for all." Again, the council reviewed the goals and objectives. We went back for feedback. The big topics that we saw from the residents that they wanted us to focus on was economic development, first responders, infrastructure, environment, parks and recreation, green space, transparency, fiscal responsibility, and citizen involvement. And again, the purpose of having goals and objectives is to make sure the foundation of your governance is happening, which is to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the residents. So economic development, the goal was to foster... So the big goal overall for economic development was to foster sustainable economic growth in Leon Valley by attracting and supporting diverse businesses, enhancing infrastructure, and creating a vibrant community that promotes job creation, innovation, and a high quality of life for residents and visitors. And these are the objectives: business attraction and retention, infrastructure and development, workforce development, revitalization, marketing and promotion.
Okay, I had a question on that. Do we, do we do workforce development in our community?
So we do things like, we have the stuff at the community center when we do, we open it up for the Texas Workforce Commission. We hold stuff through Bear Counties, economic development. We have the government, or people that are looking for jobs. So we do our own development through our economic...
Does the job fair like that?
We do the job fair, stuff like that. Yes, ma'am.
And then also, under revitalization, it says, "Enhance commercial districts and revamp underutilized properties by supporting low-density, mixed-use developments that contribute to a vibrant and dynamic local economy." So low density means not high density. It's...
Right. Again, I heard what y'all said.
So is that back to, but the zoning doesn't reflect that?
It does. Your zoning reflects, your zoning reflects low density. You have high-density zoning districts, but in your economic development districts, I mean, this falls under economic development. What I heard from y'all after the Seneca West project is y'all wanted more low density. So I'm trying to support, these are your future goals. These aren't your current goals. This isn't what you currently...
That's what we strive to, so our zoning should ref, our current, our reworking of our zoning should reflect that goal. Okay, gotcha.
So that's why next year, one of the big things that I know staff is going to be supporting is your comprehensive master plan. And so now that you adopt your goals and objectives, we're hoping that'll follow suit with the new comprehensive master plan. And so hopefully, next year in the capital budget, y'all will support a new comprehensive master plan. It should have really been done this year, but we just didn't have the budget to do it this year. And so hopefully, y'all will be able to do that. And from, after y'all adopt these goals and objectives, it should, whatever you decide, you can change these if you want to change them, it should reflect that in your comprehensive master plan.
Okay, and then on marketing and promotion, who's gonna, I mean, how is that going to be implemented? Where we want to attract new businesses and investment and possession. Our city is a premier destination for businesses, residents, and visitors. I mean, it's a great objective. I'm just wondering how we're going to get there, so.
I don't know. It just sounded really good. No, I'm just playing. You have an economic development director. We send him to go recruit. We've got things, like I've told y'all on the pack, that I can't really discuss in public because it ruins those kinds of, you know... But we do have a nice one coming, hopefully, here in the future. We've done things like the Gold's Gym.
Yeah.
We've done...
But again, this is the future, like you said.
Right, right, right. And so we do have a few things coming down. That's what your economic development director's job is, to recruit businesses, get that information out there. He's getting ready to go to retail line in two weeks. And so it's very much like ICSC. You go out, you recruit, you try to get businesses in. So that's part of that marketing and promotion. The stuff you have on your economic development website, on your city's website, that shows all of that information, demographics. All of that's vital to your marketing and promotion, yeah.
Okay, Counselor Campos.
Thank you, Mayor. On number three, workforce development, I had similar questions because it says partner with educational institution. I can see the local businesses to, and it says to provide job training. And I think it leads you to believe that we're going to have a job training program?
So we do do that already. So we do that at our library. If you pay attention to the events that are going on at the library, we do things like resume assistance. The things that we don't do are certification-related items. We don't have the capacity to do that. But we have in the past geared up with the Texas Workforce Commission, and they've put on like typing classes, internet-free classes, things of that nature, is the stuff that they assist us putting on. And so last year, we did the job fair. We worked with UTSA, and we did an economic thing at the conference center. And so we do small things like that. But your goal for the future, what I'm hoping to achieve with that is to do a few more things at the library. Me and Regina were talking about more adult programming, because we do a lot of youth programming. And so as part of your adult programming, doing some life skill stuff that could be helpful for learning. Our big thing is the lack of technology. So like learning how to use your iPhone has been, is one that we're going to take a look at. Learning how to navigate the internet, navigating AI. And so those are some of the programs that you will be seeing, hopefully, this upcoming year or the next two years. It's something that we're working on internally to find people to come in and host those classes for us.
And so we're anticipating partnering with some type of educational institution?
Yeah, so normally, we either use UTSA's, our go-to, and me and the mayor, the mayor will tell you. We use them quite often. And yes, they will either, either as a graduate school project to get completed. They will come in and do a two-week or three-week session for us with the community, and we'll post something like that. The one we haven't done lately, when I first started here, we used to utilize San Antonio Community College. And they used to come in, or we used to get a reduced tuition for certain classes. And so that's something we also need to look into. When I first started here, we did partner with them. So it's one of those things that I put in there that we need to be able to address the needs of the residents here to be employable to the businesses that are here.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
And so we're not going to piggyback on what the City of San Antonio, they have a big, huge workforce development.
We can't do that.
But we can't partner with them in any way.
So we do with the county. The county has theirs. We do it here. They come in. And so we'll do a session or two here, but no, not the City of San Antonio.
Okay, very good. Anything else? Yes.
Yeah, it sounds a lot like what Northside does with the continuing education. They offer a lot of those classes, like how to use a Mac computer, how to do things like that. It seems like maybe we should see about, since they have the center in the middle of Leon Valley, maybe partnering with them.
Yeah.
All right, okay.
Those are the things, but again, we put together what your future, it's not something we're doing now. It's not something that you're going to see tomorrow. It's, we're putting together these goals and objectives because it could have been really easy for me to say, "Here, here's everything we're doing, and we're doing it now. Box is all checked. We've met all your objectives. Done." I wanted to set y'all up for the future and what that looks like in the future and the things I think that are reasonable. We're not going to have a whole workforce development. We can't afford to do it. I don't have the staffing to be able to do that. But we can partner. We can do a couple of week sessions throughout the year to hopefully assist individuals in the community with those things.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? All right.
I'll click on my screen. Next was first response.
Was this an additional goal that we didn't have before? Oh, you can't tell me? Oh.
We had, so...
Because we had, most of them we carried over, but I don't remember first responders for some reason. Maybe it was safety.
It was, public safety was on it, so we changed, we changed the names. Economic development was on your last one, but your objectives were completely different. I mean, I had revitalization and business attraction, but kind of in a very generic term. I tried to be a little bit more specific as far as the objective goes. I mean, still a little subjective, but I, but there's a true goal attached to it, if that makes sense. First responders wasn't, but it was listed as public safety.
That's right.
To build a strong, resilient, and connected community by fostering collaboration between residents and the first responders, including police, fire, and EMS. So enhance public safety resources, invest in modern equipment, community engagement and outreach, develop programs such as neighborhood watch groups, citizen academies, emergency preparedness and training, recruitment and retention for first responders, and collaboration with public safety initiatives. Any questions on the first responder one?
Yes, Counselor Campos.
I just had a question. I just had a question. So in number three, CPR and first aid training, that's something we're going to start?
But we do it already.
Really? I did not know that.
Yeah, I took a CPR class.
Yeah, so we do it already. We normally put out flyers whenever we have staff available. Chris or one of the fire guys, Jimmy Garcia was the one that would do it for us a lot, and he's no longer with us. But yes, that's something in the future that we're going to put on. Forgetting the acronym for the one we used to do, Mayor, with Bear County. I was going to say.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Man, I know. It was an acronym.
Mike, what did we used to do when we trained with the county, preparedness?
I was going to say.
They're starting it again, but I cannot remember. Kyle used to put it on?
CERT.
CERT.
That's right, that's right.
I was going to say CERT.
CERT, that's right.
CERT training, yes. So we'll be bringing that back. That's for the community. And so you can sign up for those courses. The county's the one that normally puts it on, and so we partner with them. And they'll sometimes use our facility, and we send our residents through it. But I think the majority of the council during that time took it. I know I took it, and a lot of the department heads took it. But it's just emergency preparedness, first aid stuff that we provide to the, to the community.
And while we're on this, I just got an email today, and I was going to do it under my announcements, but I ought to just say it right now. The City of San Antonio, I went last year. It's on September 27th from 8:00 to noon. And it's their 13th Annual Community, what do you call it? I just want to make sure I got it right. Community Preparedness Workshop, and it's free. And to, I think I had a fireman and a police officer that joined me, and it was an excellent workshop, and it's free, and it's open to the public. And it's over there, it was over there at Brooks, well, it's not Brooks Air Force Base anymore, City Base, and it's the Emergency Operations Center where it's at that way. So anyway, it's open, and I'll put that out so y'all can go.
Address emergency preparedness.
But it's really good.
Okay. So things like that. Anything else on first responders? Next is infrastructure to enhance the quality of life in Leon Valley by investing in sustainable infrastructure and strategic capital improvement plan that supports growth, safety, and economic vitality. You have enhanced transportation and roadways, upgrade utilities and public service, expand and maintain public facilities, implement smart growth and sustainable initiatives, and secure funding and partnerships.
I think those are all good. What do y'all think? Any input on that? Okay, yeah, that's good.
Environment was another big one, to promote a cleaner, healthier, and more sustainable future for Leon Valley by implementing eco-friendly initiatives, conserving natural resources and reducing the city's environmental footprint, enhance waste reduction and recycling programs, increase green space and urban forestry, promote energy efficiency and renewable energy, improve water conservation and quality, and engage the community environmental stewardship.
Okay, and Counselor Campos has a comment.
On the first objective, is this enhanced waste reduction and recycling programs, is this to increase the awareness or knowledge of, to maximize recycling?
Yeah, so Earthwise Living tries to do it in their e-news, and that's part of one of their initiatives, is to get that information out. But yes, it's things like that also, like when we do household hazardous waste and making sure we get the information out about that. Anytime we do an event, that's a green event, whether it's giving out trees or an Earthwise Living Day event, getting that information out to the general public. Like I remember, I learned here that you couldn't throw pizza boxes in your recycle bin, and I was like, "Wow, I did that for probably like two years before I realized I couldn't go in my recycle bin." And so...
And then on, I had a question or comment on number two, increased green space and urban forestry. You know, develop and maintain parks. I was wondering if we could put in there existing, develop and maintain existing parks.
The only reason, yeah, so the only reason I left develop parks is because you still have parks that are coming. You have Seneca West, they're putting in a park. You have the two PDDs that you've adopted that haven't been developed back here off of Sawyer Road. Part of those plans have little parks. So I didn't want to put existing, and then you have new parks come in the next two years. So that's the only reason I didn't put existing.
And then...
Believe me, we don't...
Yeah, because, and then the, this objective, number two, is very similar to the Parks and Recreation Green Space, which is the next one. Number three, and I'm wondering whether or not those can be consolidated?
Probably.
Or we don't need them in both?
Yeah, we can probably, I can probably merge those if the council's okay with that. Again, this is just a presentation to get feedback, and then I'll bring y'all an item with a resolution to actually vote on. So if y'all are okay with, I'm seeing head nods. If y'all okay with merging those two, okay.
Yeah, if not, speak up, please.
Yes. Parks and recreational green space, to develop and maintain high-quality parks, recreational green space, wellness-focused areas that encourage physical activity, environmental stewardship, and community engagement. The objectives here is to enhance and maintain parks and trails, expand recreational programs and facilities, increase green space and environmental conservation, promote accessibility, inclusivity, and support cultural and community events. Any additions or?
Looks good to me. Yeah, I didn't have any questions on that one.
Transparency, to foster a government that is open, transparent, and accountable by ensuring clear communication, ethical decision-making, and active public engagement. Enhance public communication, encourage community participation, strengthening ethical governance, increase access to public records and decisions, implement performance and accountability in measures.
I had a question on number five. So how, how do we measure that? Or how do we, you know what I'm saying, how are we going to communicate that out, our benchmarks?
So my, my big one is going to be using the programs that we purchase. So like MyGov, MyPermitsNow, and just FOIA, taking those reports and providing them like I do in the annual report. So that's, that's the goal we've been kind of striving to with my annual report, getting data, data-driven. I want your budget and your resources and how you operate as a governance to be data-driven. And over the last four or five years, as I've been your city manager, I've been trying to move in that direction. That's why this evening, I pulled the citations to, because I think we talk sometimes in generic terms, and sometimes we...
But you have to have the facts.
And to me, the numbers are facts. I can't, I, there's no, we've issued 100 more citations. No, that's not true. We've issued 10 more citations in comparison. And so it's having those conversations.
Okay, any other questions or comments on?
Transparency.
Transparency. Very important. Okay, thank you.
And the big one, enhance public communication. The big thing, hopefully, you'll start seeing next year. We're going to start a city podcast to catch up with all the other cities. A lot of cities are doing podcasts, so as part of our PEG channel initiative, we're hoping to get that started sometime in FY '26.
Right. Communication, we can't do enough of it. It's really, really important. Yeah.
Try, we try.
Okay.
Fiscal responsibility to ensure responsible stewardship of public funds by maintaining a balanced budget, optimizing resources, and making strategic financial decisions that promote long-term sustainability. Maintain a balanced budget, enhance financial transparency, optimize resource allocation, plan for long-term... Uh, maintain a balanced budget, enhance financial transparency, optimize resource allocation, plan for long-term financial stability and seek alternative funding sources.
I think we're doing that, yeah.
Think I, think we're.
I think.
I'm heading in that direction.
Any, any, yeah, I think we are definitely heading in that direction. Definitely.
Uh, citizen involvement to actively engage and empower residents by fostering culture of civic participation, open dialogue and collaborative decision-making. Expand public engagement opportunities, increase accessibility to government process, encourage participation in boards and committees, improve communication and outreach and recognize and support community initiatives.
Okay, I, I had a question on that one, on citizen involvement. On number one, I think host annual town hall. And then add and. Three coffees with the mayor and council because it's, we don't, we only have one town hall. And I think that the, the, we, we follow it up with a quarterly coffee too, to keep, keep that. Public engagement going. So I don't know. Do y'all think we should be more specific or, or just?
No, I think it's not a bad, a bad thing to add. We can add a dinner.
So it's just an annual, and we've had an annual, I don't know how many we're on now, you know, seventeen, I think, but.
But I think by this time, I think it was like close to midnight and everything sounded pretty good.
Okay, there you go. Okay. Though, though, those were my suggestions on number one. The rest looked good to me. So unless you have other questions or comments. Okay.
So, um, so what's next? So I will take the, the little comments I got. So thank you for your feedback this evening. I'll make those changes. We'll turn it into a resolution. Um, hopefully y'all adopt them by resolution and we'll put them on the website and start pushing them out. Um, we will try to start adding them uh, to council initiatives. So like when we bring back a budget adjustment or we bring back um, a planning and zoning item. We try to tie that PowerPoint into your goals and objectives. So we'll start trying to add that slide um, back to your PowerPoints. We used to do it.
Right, uh-huh.
And so we'll try to make sure that the initiatives that we're taking will add it back.
Yes, Councilor Roscoe.
Dr. Caldera, we've been doing, working this forever and we've been throwing stuff at you back and forth, back and forth. And of course, one of the biggest ones was transparency that you have on there. I want to thank you so much for putting it together the way, when I was reading it uh, this weekend and when I was going through it. I said, well, it was pretty well put together despite of how much stuff we gave y'all.
Thanks. Yeah, no, the staff did an excellent, I mean, I, I don't take this single-handedly, believe me, all of my directors, lots of staff meetings, lots of conversations. Um, you know, Melinda's a wordsmith too, and so she's really good at finding that word that fits just right in some of the, the language. So we appreciate all of that.
Well, you know, we always say that we don't want to have a document that just sits on a shelf and is not living. And so I like the way that you're going to incorporate it into the budget, I mean, the agenda items, but also I guess you're, at your, the annual report.
Sure.
Will compile a lot of this.
Um, and so hopefully after our first full year, so not this January is annual report, but after a full year with these goals and objectives. We'll do like a synopsis of the things that we did that year that helped meet these goals and objectives.
That'd be great. Okay, anyone else? Anybody in our chambers? Okay, very good. Thank you, Dr. Caldera and all the directors and everyone's efforts on. Um, these goals and objectives. Greatly appreciate it. All right. So we move then to, if there's no other questions or comments, uh, to presentations three point three. Presentation and direction to staff to amend section fifteen point oh two point three two seven PD, Plan Development District. And again, Dr. Caldera will begin the discussion.
Um, so this comes to you because we adopted um, the sustainability, we merged the two documents. I promised that I would bring you back. This is the discussion piece. So uh, this is in an ordinance. We're not changing it this evening, but I wanted to get feedback from y'all. On the changes or the things that maybe you didn't like about the PD or things that you want to change. Cause I had no idea where y'all wanted to start, what y'all didn't like collectively, um, what y'all would like to see. Um, so kind of opening up that conversation. Then next time I can draft you up something um, based on the information that y'all provide me this evening.
Can you give a little bit of history about this PD? Because, you know, this is relatively new. I mean, twenty. Let's see, twenty nineteen, I think, right? Something like that. It was when Brandon was here. So we, but what did we do before? And then anyway, I guess the, I'm thinking of the um, advantages and disadvantages of a PD. Because I'm not sure I really like it, but.
So PDs do have a place and they're supposed to be project-driven. So technically, when you look at a PD, you want to look at it from a project perspective and they normally. It's another kind of term for mixed use, but you're looking at it from a whole project piece. So if you read, and once she gets it up, I, I'll be able to kind of explain it to you. If you read the PD, there's a portion in there that says um, like unique or, or something to that nature, right? And so it's supposed to be a unique project that doesn't have a very specific zone. So maybe it is um, some homes, some retail, um, maybe a park space, maybe, you know, a, a little bit of kind of everything. That doesn't have a very specific R1 zone. And so you do a PD, a plan development to have an actual. Oh, project-specific um. Uh, zoning for a project. Now, the PD, because of the way it was written, um, has been allowed to be used for neighborhoods. And so, and not that it necessarily, you can't use it for a unique neighborhood, but unique was such a subjective term. That staff couldn't tell the developer in court of law. If we said, nope, we're denying this, you can't even move forward. I, there's not a definition for, unique could be all the variance he was asking for. Unique could have been these small little homes that, unique could have been, so. They very much kind of checked those boxes because they were very subjective in nature when it came to neighborhoods. The intent of PDs is supposed to be, again, more project-driven and they were supposed to include more of a mixed-use feel without it being. Mixed use. It's not a, it, you have so many different zones. So it's not just retail and living. That's typically what mixed use is. This could be. Some parks, some B3, a whole unique, it could have been some tiny homes in the back and so it could have, it, it's normally. Something that doesn't fit in one zoning district, including mixed use.
But do we have any PDs that have mixed use? Any business component? I don't think we do.
I don't think so. They've been.
It's just residential with a park.
Yeah.
Right?
Residential with a park. I ha- we haven't brought, I'm trying to think if we've brought anything to you. I can't think of any. I'd have to go back and take a look to see all the PDs that were issued. Um, but that's the original, or if you go back and look at, if you just Google Plan Development Districts and their purpose. Um, their purpose was to bring a project to a city that doesn't necessarily fit in a zone and it should be a collab. Normally is a collaborative process between the city and the developer and you kind of work together. But that normally also means that the city, from an economic development standpoint, is chipping in a little bit to make this project happen. Sometimes there's tax abatements tied to it. It's a whole. Project initiative, kind of like what we would do with the town center. That's a probably, but say you were doing the town center with some living components and maybe a plaza park situation. And you'd have some R1, some B2, um, you know, maybe a little bit of R6 or multifamily in that mix. And so um, that's what a plan de- that would be a unique plan development project.
Okay, uh, yeah, I know I have a lot of questions, but go ahead, uh, Councilor Campos, please.
You know, I, I was looking at from, do we still need this?
Yeah, that's exactly what I, that's what I was.
Because.
So Melinda would. Oh, I'm sorry.
From what I could tell, I'm not sure, you know, when you're looking at, when you go down the purpose of it and you start looking at all the items and when you. Some of them didn't, you know, when you say compatibility of land uses. Well, some of them, they weren't compatible. But yet it, it still came along. And then when I looked at applicability and you start looking at uh, number one and number two there. Where you got mixed use or a traditional neighborhood development requiring more flexibility or innovative design standards. But when you get down to two, it starts talking about uh, not adequately addressing neighborhood concerns. And it's kind of like, wait, those are, those, those are opposing. And I don't know how in the Seneca West, it met those.
Yeah.
And how the neighborhood wasn't put into that. I just didn't understand it and then come up with mutually agreeable enforcement development standards. What I saw it as is there's a developers coming to us in one package and said, I need all of these variances. I need setback variances. I need smaller lots. I need this and you need to approve it. That's how I saw a PD. And as I, as I reviewed this in more detail, I said, whoa, why do we even need this? We, we could have gone through this through the regular zoning and just handled this one by one. I, at, at least that was my opinion.
No. No, I had that comment. I had, I said, yeah, how did it work before the PD? You know, I think, you know, and why do we need it? Because again, you've got these, these uh, buzzwords and you're like, did we actually follow that? But anyway, we didn't.
So, so Melinda would argue, yes, that we had this conversation about just, you know, recommending removing it altogether. Um. You, I can, so what I can do is take a look at how other cities have a PD. Um, I think what makes us different is y'all don't have a downtown. You don't have a town center. You don't have an event center. You don't have a river. You don't, I mean, you're not. I, I don't know. I just, I, I don't know in this, like if you took it out today and we said, okay, we're not going to have a PD and, and we. Do it as a mixed use or a neighborhood with vari- because it's still, they still could have done, without the PD. They still could have done Seneca West or Trilogy. They would have just come for uh, uh, residential, you know, variance requi- I mean, it. So, but he did it as a project and he, the reason he said he did it that way or the whole conversation about it was to be collaborative. And the best example of that is the Trilogy property where it was, that became a PD. But apartments could have gone there. It was owned three different things. He came back and forth and tried to meet the needs. That was the idea of the PD is to go back and forth and try to meet the needs. Now, I'm not going to say that the other developments went that way. I'm not going, you know.
I understand, yeah.
Took every part of the PD when it came to Seneca West. We discussed it with the attorneys. We made sure that they were. That I could, so originally we were like, okay, well, we'll just deny the request. And then they were like, well, I mean, he, this is what he sa- this is, and he makes the justification as part of his Plan Development District. If, if he goes through it and checks all the boxes, and so then it becomes our job to argue that it isn't that. And so then we're looking at it from a legal perspective, saying, can we argue this in court, his justification for meeting this section? So it's up to you. I know that in the developer world, it is not an, it's not new. We were newer bringing it on. Um, but they do exist in other communities. If you would like me to provide you some other community guidelines on what a PD is before y'all delete it, I can certainly do that.
Uh, Councilor Campos has another comment.
When I served on the Planning and Zoning Commission with Mr. Blackmore. Uh, Mr. Shahadi had come and, and discussed some townhouses over here in the city center, okay? And it's just my impression because I don't know the dates of when it became. Uh, where a city could not dictate what materials you could use. But I think during the time that I was on the planning and zoning, they were directing that development over here. Well, it had to be this much hardy board, this much so forth and so on. And then I could see where the plan development made sense, okay? Because it was going to be a little bit better than, we, we were trying to give them, okay, the elevation needs to look like this. I remember those discussions. But since that time period where we can no longer uh, tell a developer what materials can use. I don't know that what applicability this has. So that's just.
Yes, Councilor Marsh.
I think that there's probably some, some meaning to keeping the PD thing, but I think it needs, you know, major revisions. My biggest issue with it, and I think it goes to your, can you defend it legally? Is that we use so many subjective words that say nothing and we don't hold the developer responsible. For proving that he's met all the criteria. And I can see that we might need a PDD um, uh, standard. If somebody comes in and wants to renovate some of our shopping centers and put some apartments over them or whatever. So I think most of our possibilities because of our limited remaining open land in our city. Is if somebody comes and renovates some piece of something and wants to look at this. So I, I do think it has some, some purpose, but I think we need to really look at the wording that we're using. Because it is laid out for any developer to do anything he wants to do because they're such fluffy words and they don't mean anything. And, and so that's, that's my biggest issue. I also have issue with um, in B2. Besides the adequately addressed neighborhood concerns, when exactly did the public get input? Before the PDD was presented and decided on? So I don't think the public is involved early enough. In saying, this doesn't qualify as a PDD. So we don't even want to, you know.
Well, I mean, for Samir, he did come early. I mean, he was giving us like. His projects early, early on. So I will say that. Um, but he, in order, the way it works is he has to submit a whole project idea. Then he brings it and I think he brought it two extra times to the zoning commission just to get feedback. Um, and so from a. Public notice or public interaction, y'all had tons of it with Seneca West. Y'all had the whole neighborhood out here. I, in all honesty, I think we, the city, I mean, I put out fact sheet. I mean, we put out information. It was at the town hall meeting. It was at the coffee. The issue was that the residents came out, told you, told the council or told the body that they didn't want the project. And the council still voted to do the pro- I mean, that, that's not, has nothing to do with Samir, has nothing to do with the PD. PD, but there were residents that also were in favor of the project. So again, I, you know, because. It, it's one of those things, just because this PD existed doesn't mean that those projects wouldn't existed. They would have just come in in a different way. Uh, we would still done them. They still would have come in with variances and I truly believe with the PDD or without the PDD, those projects would still exist.
But, oh, yes, Councilor Bolton.
I just want to clarify back, you're more talking about the Sawyer project, am I correct? Because when, when we went door-to-door and talked to those people, they felt like they were getting blindsided, that they did not know all this was going on. Until, the only reason they found it was because of the election that they were told about all of this. Um, I don't remember in all the conversations that I had with people that lived in that area, them having any input in any of it. And I don't know what happened outside of that. Um, so I'm only going by, you know, what I was told, but that, that seems like that would have been the best place to start was with the people that lived in the community.
Okay, yes, Ms. Marsh, go ahead.
I think we do have the variation between the Seneca West and the Sawyer property. But I guess what I was really trying to get at is that by the time people did know about it. And I agree, there was lots of discussion about Seneca West, probably more so than, than the Sawyer properties. But it's like, it was already presented as a PDD, like this is the way we're going. And it's more that decision, does this qualify as a PDD? That was already seemed to be done by the time public got involved.
Yeah, so that, that is true. It ha- it, and then that's just the way it goes. I mean, any application we get the.
That's not what this says.
But before it comes to y'all, so if you go up, they have to submit step one, a completed PD project. They can't just like, oh, let's have an open conver- it's, they have to as part of the process, they have to submit their completed plan. So they bring a completed plan and the idea then, because then it's like, what y'all ask for is, well, what does that look like? Right? We want renditions. Well, how far are you asking for? And so all these questions come up. And so as part of that plan, they bring it to y'all. It is up to this body. It is up to the community to openly discuss what that is. Again, I do truly believe that both the SENA projects, Trilogy, Sawyer. All of those projects would have still happened without the PD. Like they could still all exist under our current zoning. And so they use the PD or he used the PD more so, and what he was saying was to get more citizen feedback. Because that avenue allowed more citizen be- whether or not that's true or not, I, I can't, you know, I'm not going to speak to that. I'm just saying that that was, he wanted a collaborative effort in order to help assist in getting the zoning passed. And so that was one of the reasons he chose the PD process or that was the original discussions with himself and staff. Was that's why he chose that direction to go. But he could have, if that did not exist, it's not like there aren't ways through the law to allow that those projects to happen.
Yeah, got you. Yes, Councilor Campos.
Completely agree with you that the projects may have gone the same opposition of the way it was voted by the council at the time. But I think if you go to uh, G, which uh, might be pretty.
Which number? G?
Yeah, section G.
Section G, okay. E. There we go.
There, you know, is this.
Yeah, the criteria.
You know, no PD district shall be established which does not meet all of the following criteria. And I don't think it.
According to our attorney, so this is, this was highly contested. We had residents come out and say, it doesn't meet this one, it doesn't meet that one. Some came out and said it meets this one, it doesn't meet that one. Um, so in the project plan for all of them, he had to submit how he met those criteria. And so he do, he submits how he thinks he's met in those criteria, and then staff will, like, then we're in the position of saying, well, we don't agree that you did or you didn't. So normally, we do consult with the attorney. Um, and so I'm trying to remember on the Sawyer property, but I know for sure on Seneca West, we went back and forth with the attorneys on it, um, and Trilogy and Senna. Um, and so Sawyer, I don't know why it's, I'm disassociating with it, but I know we, normally for PDs, when the developer comes in and says, and if we have any questions, because we'll normally go in and be like, does it demonstrate a more superior development to achieve, achieved through standard zoning classifications? That was the one I was kind of harping on, on one of them, because to me, it wasn't a superior project. To me, it was lower than what the zoning was. We were asking for R1 or RE1 at the time for Seneca West. To me, that was a more superior zoning than the R6 with variances. People argue differently. People argued that R6 was a superior project over RE1 for tax, or, I mean, so it was a very subjective line item. So if you're, and I've said this to council members that have reached out to me, we would like more concrete criteria, if you're going to keep the zoning. So if it must, it must increase, if, and this is an easy one, it must increase property value or property tax by 10%, or something that has a.
Tangible.
A tangible thing, or you do make the decision and get rid of the PD, and we move through another route through the zoning, I mean.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Campos.
That was my point, that all of these, you know, I didn't see, it demonstrates a resolution of compatibility issues, I didn't see that happening. Uh, things demonstrate consistency related to water.
Yeah.
There was no water brought, it was, it was the city, us as a body, coming together separately to buy new water rights to meet the needs. And so, you know, I, I didn't, at the time, you know, did they consider that when they were doing the PD? So my point is, I think we need to retool this to make it just exactly with what you just said.
But I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm sitting here, we don't have any vacant land left, really.
I know.
So I mean, it's kind of like a moot point, don't you think?
Well, so here's my, here's my thing, you know, you don't have any currently zoned vacant land. You do have a lot of vacant land. Pos Road is a prime example of that, right? You've got sixty, eighty-four houses total coming in on Senna. Nobody would have, that wasn't on the vacant land list, that was already considered developed land, because it had houses on it, it was zoned R1. That, so you have a lot of land in Montiroblis, you've got land in Sawyer, you've got land still in the back of AIDS, Ms. Alkaser's property, you have the Hendricks property. Uh, you know, I know people don't live forever, right? And so grandkids get these property, that was just like the Pos Road property.
Oh, so the, the one house would be raised, and you'd put multiple houses on it?
Not me, you said.
No, but I'm, no, but I'm a developer.
If I can put multiple houses there, I'm in the wrong line of work, no.
But next, next to the creek, which, mm.
You can, I mean, that, the thing about it is, it's not like it's not unheard of, you do have large parcels of land that do have R1 homes on it. I can tell you, if you go back five years and take a look at the Pos Road property, that wasn't considered undeveloped land. If you look at our undeveloped land map, that was not on there, it was considered developed land, because you had R1 homes on there. They weren't on the undeveloped land, that wasn't even a spot we were considering as part of developed land. Um, and they sold the property, they had it rezoned, and now you have eighty-four houses instead of the three, so, or two.
Well, yeah, I'm, I'm thinking of Pos Road, you meant Carroll Poses.
Carroll Poses, I'm sorry, Heatonir property, Senna property, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to be sure.
Yes, 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 sorry.
Yeah, exactly.
I'm sorry.
Well, but also, you know, you, and then I was thinking around the corner of Pos, down there, we put the apartment complex. So that was a vacant land, so that we kept, yeah, I just wanted to clarify that.
So, yes, I'm, I'm sorry, my apologies, I don't mean to abuse anybody. But, so yes, so you have homes, like, I, I think of back in Seneca West, they may not be happy, right, with the R6 development coming back there, they may want to sell. They may now want to sell those large pieces of property. Um, if not them, maybe their children or great grandchildren, or somewhere down the line, they may not want all of that land, some owner of that property, five years from now, ten years from now, and that could potentially, they could be in here in five to ten years asking to sell that piece of land. So it, you know, the same thing with the Sawyer property, that just happened, that was an R1 property, it wasn't considered undeveloped land, that was a developed parcel of land. And so, um, you, so even though on your undeveloped land map, you don't have land available for large developments, it's not like it could not happen in the future. Um, it may not happen in my future, but it, it's something I do think it's in the city's future.
Yeah, yeah, I was surprised about the Sawyer Road, definitely. Uh, Counselor Marsh, and then Counselor Campos.
So I agree with you that we can't tell what's going to happen in the future, and whether it's redevelopment of existing properties, or, you know, division of existing properties, or whatever. So I do think there's value in retooling this, um, Planned Development District. Um, but I think that we need to, not knowing how it's going to be applied, we need to be very specific and get words like superior development out of there, because that means nothing, and you're right, I can argue, I think mine's superior, you think yours is superior, and, you know, that kind of stuff. So I think that there's, there's value in retooling this so that it's meaningful, even if we don't use it for fifty years, it's going to be something that can at least be followed and enforced. And I think, I personally would like to see more proof required of the developer. Um, for example, with the criteria, no PDD, no district shall be established which does not meet all the following criteria. So they need to prove that standard zoning won't work, and like, standard zoning should be the default, and PDD should be the exception, so they don't have, they have to prove that I can't do what I need to do or what I want to do if I use standard zoning by going down each of these criteria, and, you know, but like, resolution of compatibility issues with surrounding development, I don't even know what that means, you know? They think everything's compatible with what they want to do, and they can argue that way, but, um, I think, you know, it's really key that we fix and update the city's comprehensive master plan, because we have so many references in here to the master plan. If the master plan isn't where it needs to be for our city today and in the future, then we're just going to go around in circles, getting an old master plan with a new definition of a PDD and that kind of thing.
Okay, Counselor Campos.
I agree with what Councilmember said, that's where I was going as well.
Um, and also, didn't we, at the discussion that we had on, on, on this whole Chapter Fifteen zoning, weren't we going to eliminate mixed use?
Yeah, so.
It was a recommendation, and so then we've got mixed use here, so that's, yeah.
Yeah, so, again, it's kind of.
I didn't want to, because I think that's important as an option.
Yeah, I, so again, it was, I mean, it's just going back and forth and looking at your zoning districts, and whatever you think is best compatible for your city, that's why I harp on the comprehensive master plan, because maybe your community doesn't want mixed use.
Yeah, Counselor Arasco, you're next, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, through my second and third scanning of this, now I can see where, uh, my colleagues are going with this, and one of the things that, when I was going through this, I said, okay, we can go ahead and change this and that, there's going to be a new council that's going to come back, are they going to change what we changed? And, um.
Could be.
And, and I remember those days, the planning and zoning, where you would have an opportunity to say, well, what kind of material are you using? Something, you know, build something of value. I remember Mr. Blackmore challenging and, and say, well, no, that's not good enough. Um, so, but you had indicated that you're going to compare this with other cities.
So that's up to y'all, that's an option. So I can provide you, I can go deep dive and try to take a look at what other cities are doing with these districts, and, you know, maybe bring back a mixed use to y'all, maybe bring back, uh, some variations of a PD, uh, from other cities. I don't, I don't want anybody to feel like I'm, this is really truly a policy decision on how this is handled, so I don't want to direct y'all in y'all's policy in regards to zoning, but I can provide you the information in order for y'all to make a more informed decision. So I can get you all a couple of cities out there that have similar zoning districts, and you can take a look at them and see if there's language in them that you like, or one that you would like us to maybe replicate in some form or fashion, um, and that we can bring this conversation back and continue the discussion on nine sixteen, or, or a different date. Um, or you can say, look, we don't want to take a chance, and we'll have another PD project, eliminate it, and just get rid of it, and then bring it back for discussion and rebuild it, like, that's an option too, that doesn't, you know.
Okay.
No, wait, let me finish.
Yes, go ahead.
I think it was really good, and, but I can see their concern, so if we can do that, do a comparable, um, view of what they got compared to what we got, and let us look at, or give us about a week to look at it, once you do that, and then we'll go on there. But no, you did a good job, that's.
So is that the consensus of the council, to go out and get other cities' PD and?
To compare, yes.
Okay, but not at the next, not at the next city council meeting, because that's going to take you some time, yeah.
But I'll get you all some other cities and try to.
Let's do that.
Get you some information, okay.
All right, Emma, anyone else, anyone else in the chambers? Okay, thank y'all. I think it's been a good, good discussion, and thanks for all your efforts, do appreciate it. All right, so let's move on to announcements by the mayor and city council. Okay, uh, I've got a few. Well, I just wanted to congratulate Serenity Cafe for their grand opening this last Saturday, and Counselor Beth Marsh and I attended, along with Roque Salinas. If y'all, have y'all, y'all know where Comfort Cafe is, so it's in that same shopping center, so they're kind of promoting it, where you go to Comfort Cafe, if you're like me, I go on a Saturday or Sunday, and you have about a forty-five minute wait, right, to get in, because it's really good food, and it is comfort food, by the way. And so they're, they're, they're directing the people from the Comfort Cafe to go to the Serenity Cafe, which is around the corner from the Comfort Cafe, and they have coffee and pastries. And again, it's the same kind of concept as Comfort Cafe, they have no prices on their menus, you just give a donation, and remember that the donation goes to help people with drug addictions and other mental, you know, other issues. So, but it was a really, uh, good, it was really nice, and, uh, I cert.
I can definitely speak for the quality of the food, it was delicious.
I, I didn't have anything, but boy, I wanted to, but I didn't.
Walking around with samples, and it was really nice.
So anyway, but it's, there are a lot, a lot of good, good, good people in it, so anyway, so please go, Serenity Cafe, again, they're not open every day, I think they're open Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, so, okay. Um, hey, we got some rain, one, I got one point three inches on Sunday, but I just want to, again, emphasize, we're not out of the woods, we're still in a drought, and we're on level three. So again, one time a week to water your grass. Uh, on September sixteenth, besides the other two issues that we were talking about, um, that we're going to have the tower and the, um, your issue, Counselor, um, Arasco, about the cost of picking up extra trash, uh, the Boy Scouts are coming, and so we are going to have an executive session at six on the tower first, but they'll all be here at five, and I just wanted to invite any of my colleagues, if you'd like to join me, and, uh, in the, um, court down the, down the, down the way here, uh, they're wonderful. These are our future leaders in, uh, in the world, and they love to ask questions, and so, anyway, please, please join me at five on September sixteenth, if you can. Uh, fall cleanup is going on, remember, there are limits on your piles, I'm looking at a lot of big piles. It, it can only be eight by eight by eight. Um, so, um, again, we're having the discussion on the sixteenth, as far as the cost that's associated with picking up the leftovers, um, but the pickup starts on September fifteenth. And then I already, already made the announcement about the annual community preparedness, and, um, anyway, I hope everyone had a great Labor Day, and congratulations to A&amp;M for winning, UTSA, condolences, I've got, I've got people on both, yeah, UT, where I went to school as well, but they're, they lost, but anyway, I, I had to, I had to throw that out, because it was a football weekend, and it's just now beginning, so, anyway, that's all I have, so if anybody else, I know Counselor Campos usually have announcements as well, but thank y'all for coming, we really appreciate it.
So, Mayor, just want to let the public know that we did have three bid openings for three different, uh, water and sewer projects on the twenty-eighth. Uh, the bids are being analyzed, uh, we, we received three bids from reputable companies, I recognize them, and, uh, I'm not going to disclose any of the financial information, because they're being reviewed by our engineering consultant. But, uh, looks like we've got some very good prices, especially for the Alverdi Road, uh, less than the one point three million dollars.
Oh, that's great.
It looks great. And I just do want to remind everybody about the low-hanging, uh, trees, because they do impact the, our emergency vehicles, as they're going to respond to an emergency, and they're just damaging, they can damage our, uh, vehicles, so please keep that in mind.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Arasco.
Thank you, Mayor, and, um, go Marshall Rams. If you're an old folk like me, you can go to the, uh, school district and get a pass for, to go in free to the football games. And it's you and a guest, so if you want to go support your, uh, high school team, you know, uh, it's free. Also, uh, a lot of concerns have been coming up about, um, the police, uh, enforcing this and enforcing that. Uh, we do have a CPAC, and Tina's a good, uh, example of a member of getting feedback from the community and bringing it to the CPAC and bringing it to the council, and that's what the CPAC, uh, does. We're not there to tell the police what to do, but we just express our concerns, and everybody's welcome to go there, and, uh, but thank you so much.
When is the next meeting?
Uh, when's the next one, Tina, uh, next month, right?
I think it's in September, isn't it? It was July?
Oh, we're reading September, that's right.
October, July, August, September.
I think it may be next month, but I'll double check, and I'll definitely put it out.
So, and we'll, we'll get it out to everybody, so.
I encourage everyone, our, our council members, uh, to please participate and go. And also, uh, next week, there's, um, a class, I think it's called Hogwild, is it, still called that?
Yeah, 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 that's right, on the twelfth.
The councilors and the mayor, it's a good class, and I recommend it, that, uh, you go, you can get to benchmark with other cities like us, and you also, uh, there's certain criterias that you have to meet as being a council, as far as, um, safe, uh, computer safety and all that, they give those classes there, and they can accept that as a class, so, uh, and they feed you.
And they feed you, that's right, they do.
And so, uh, I recommend that strongly, but other than that, uh, that's all I have, Mayor.
For reminding us on that, that's, it's always good, and I think we should get a legislative update as well, don't you think?
Is it going to be on planning and zoning? Is the legislative update on just, on planning?
Oh, a legislative update just on planning and zoning? Oh, okay.
But I think it's because there's still one second question, though.
Yeah, probably so, okay. Anyone else on council have an announcement? Okay, if not, then we will move to the city manager's report, Dr. Caldera.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Sorry, I sent you all my city manager's report a little late this afternoon, I was running around catching up today, uh, but it is outside, it is online, uh, so feel free to read it. Um, I do want to give a shout out to firefighter Sean Pipkin, as he was monitoring the creek, uh, he did witness somebody turning into the creek and getting washed down. Um, had he not witnessed that, that lady would have drowned, so we did, we got to do a swift water rescue, and so, um, I do want to give a shout out to the fire department, they acted swiftly and got her out, and was able to save, save her, um, but really, really, you know, by the grace of, um, by the grace of God on that one, because they said it was pretty close.
I was wondering how that happened, yeah, because I thought, well, maybe they were at the, 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 uh.
No, he was out, they were monitoring, no, they were just monitoring the creek, and he so happened to see her go in, ran after the car as she was going down the creek, um, and was able, on his radio to call for, um, reinforcements, but if somebody else, if she would have, she would have been on the phone to call nine-one-one, and it would have taken us five, you know, minutes to get out there, she would have definitely.
Thank you.
Not have been here, so, so thanks to the fire department. Um, again, turn around, don't drown, please pay attention, uh, to our low water crossing, um, and, you know, just don't risk it.
Mm-hmm, that's right. Okay, anything, okay, very good, thank you. All right, um, next is the consent agenda, six point one to six point four, uh, we need a motion, is there anyone that wants to pull any?
I still move, Mayor, to accept six point one to six point four.
To six point four, okay, and I know, Dr. Caldera, did you want to make that announcement on number four?
Uh, so Michael Guyardal will be starting with us on September fifteenth, if the council approves the consent agenda, um, this evening, and so he is going to be our new planning and zoning director, he comes from us from the city of Holotus. Um, I did have two council members sit on that, I think every.
I think everybody was in agreement that he was the top choice, as well as the mayor and the staff. And so, we welcome him to our team, we're excited to have him. We were going to try to have him here this evening. Unfortunately, he had to be in Halotas for something else and finish up stuff there, but I'll make sure he's at the next meeting.
Okay, so we have a motion by councillor Roscoe, and a second by councillor Heil, to adopt the consent agenda, six point one to six point four. Any further discussion? I have something to add here. Okay, when we put something in the consent agenda, I just want clarification. And we usually say that it will be approved, but I just want the, the, of course, the council knows this, but our citizens and, and also people that bring items for approval to the council, like development or something, that it can always be pulled out and discussed further, and it's not automatically approved. So, I just want that to be clarified, because I usually say, oh, thank you very much, it'll be approved at the next meeting. I'm not going to say that anymore, so, anyway, I learned the hard way. But I just want that clarification, so, for the record. So, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion does carry. Okay, now, we've got all of our budget stuff next. So let me go ahead and read the regular agenda, beginning at eight oh two this evening, regarding items one through five below. The city provides the following information in compliance with Texas Government Code, section five five one point oh four three subsection C. I, a copy of the city's proposed budget may be located on the city's homepage of its website at W H T T P S double slash W W W dot Leon Valley, Texas dot gov, and subsection two, excuse me, taxpayer impact statement for the median valued homestead property, a comparison of the current property tax dollar bill in dollars pertaining to the property for the current fiscal year FY, an estimate if the proposed budget is adopted for the upcoming FY, and an estimate of a balanced budget at the no new revenue tax rate for the upcoming FY is below. And if you can see on the agenda, the medium value homestead property of two hundred and thirty thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars, the current fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, you paid one thousand eighty-seven, sixty-seven. An estimate if the proposed budget is adopted for this year FY twenty-five, twenty-six, it would go up a hundred dollars and twelve cents to one thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars and seventy-nine cents. Now, if an estimate, an estimate if a balanced budget is funded and adopted at the no new revenue rate for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, which is below the proposed budget rate this year, would be one thousand, one hundred and sixty-four dollars and seventy-two cents. So that's a difference of seventy-seven dollars and five cents. So, we are now required to put this, it's a new law, and we're required to put this on our agenda, and, and I'm assuming read it, so, anyway.
You don't have to necessarily read it, it's just part of the agenda, it doesn't say anymore in the law.
Well, I just thought, since this is our first time, I wanted to do that. So, we're going to, on seven point one, conduct another public hearing for the city of Leon Valley on the proposed fiscal, budget fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. And Dr. Caldera, I don't know, is this about the tenth time we've done this?
I don't even know.
We want, but we still want to hear from you.
I love, I love budgetary collaboration, and I start giving y'all budget preps as early as March. I really want to hear from the citizens. I always say, this is not my money, it's their money, and I want to hear from them and what they want, or what they feel that should be included in their budget, and, and those kinds of things, so.
And we had a, we had a really good discussion at the last meeting, so we'll just continue that discussion, so.
Yes, absolutely.
Go ahead.
So you have, so your next few items, you have your public hearing, and then I think Carol put at your places how certain things have to be read, okay. So we're going to do the public hearing, then we're going to move on to approve the budget, and then approve or not approve the budget. And then, we're going to have the resolution to ratify, so there's, and then you'll have the public hearing on the tax rate, so we'll open it up for that, and then hopefully adoption of the tax rate. So I'm going to go through this PowerPoint fairly quickly, because we've already gone, you know, we don't need to sit here and reiterate everything. So if, at any point, you need further clarification, or I missed something, just wave at me, stop me, members from the audience.
And members of the audience as well.
Thank you. But I'm going to move pretty quickly through, through the budget. So there's our organizational chart. So the, ooh, so the big difference here is, your capital fund reserved is five point two million, and that's because we took out four hundred and seventy-five thousand for future capital purchase funds. I look at this as, as like a final goal that I had for myself years ago, that was something that I really wanted to happen, for y'all to start really planning for your future needs. I think this is really great, that y'all are starting to do this, and hopefully y'all will continue this in, in your future budgets. And then you have one point two million in your emergency fund, so total sitting in your reserve fund is six point nine million. And, you know, I was joking with the staff, because I was really trying to get your general fund reserve, if you take a look at your CAFR, I've almost doubled, over-doubled your capital fund reserve. And one of the big goals for that, what I was trying to do was to see if we can get you closer to eight million. And the reason that I was trying to do that was, I thought maybe it was a possibility for you to pay for your new public works building out of your capital fund reserve. And so it was, it was just something I kept internal, I didn't make it known, but that was one of the big reasons, because I thought if you hit eight million, you could spend two million on public works and not go into debt, and you currently already refinanced your debt, and so it's such a low interest rate, you, you could just continue to pay that off and not go into more debt, and so you wouldn't have an increased tax rate on your interest and sinking fund. We got pretty close, I don't know, I don't know if we'll get there or not, but that's one of the, one of the reasons I was really trying really hard to kind of build that general fund reserve, because I thought that maybe that could be a future, a future need, since it's been talked about since two thousand and ten. But maybe, maybe something that, something the council can consider in the future. I don't know if that's going to be a big possibility or not. The big reason for that is, as y'all know, if y'all have been paying attention, the state legislature passed a one percent cap. And so I don't, well, it's getting close.
They actually did? I was going to say, I haven't seen it in the paper.
No, I mean, it hasn't, it's, Ben and Court didn't agree with the amendment, so they're supposed to go back to committee, our conference committee, and we haven't seen what the conference committee has come out to say yet. The rumblings around are that it's probably going to pass. And so, if that happens for next year, you're, you won't be able, your virtual approval rate can't go over one percent. So that's a little less than half of a penny. So y'all would be having to go back to the voters to make those decisions. So, any future firefighters you wanted to add, any future police officers you had in your mind to add in the future, maybe a little bit more difficult to do.
So they don't have the caveat in the bill, except, or, or, the exception is, is a police, public safety?
They do, they do, but for seventy-five thousand population and over.
Oh.
You're not there.
Oh, no.
Yes, ma'am.
But yet, everybody is going to go to one percent.
Yes, ma'am. Those are the amendments.
Just FYI, I mean, we were at eight percent many, many, many years ago, and then in two thousand and nineteen, it went from eight percent to three point five, and that's what we've been working on this year. And now, Dr. Caldera makes us aware that, in the legislature, oh, they've got to finish up and go home, is now down to one percent. And that's the tax rate. That's the tax rate.
That's the tax rate. And so, that, so, so I know it's on the agenda, and we're going to get to the tax rate. And so, again, this year, you can bring your tax rate up to point five six as the voter approval, I'm not recommending that you get to point five six. I did send you all my city manager's report. You do have the option this year, if you want to add the three firefighters this year, without going to the voters, you could raise your property tax rate to point five four, and you could bring on the three firefighters this year. You can go to point five three, which you were before, and bring on two firefighters, and the, and the, like, admin person for the fire department. And so, it is my job to inform you of legislative changes, inform you of how that can impact you for the future, but I know when I make statements like that, I will end up on Next Door saying, city manager wants to raise the property tax rate to astronomical amounts, and we can't afford to live. I'm not necessarily saying that, I just know that that's been initiative for this council, for this community, to add public safety to the books. You can't, you have the ability to do that this year by raising your tax rate, you could, and if that's something you choose to do, or you want to have that conversation, you can't adopt the rate tonight. We would have to push it, we'd have to publish what that new rate would be, like, write, leave the office and do that now, get it published, and bring it back to you on the sixteenth for a vote. So you couldn't vote this evening on that. But I, it is my job, as your administrator, to make sure that I inform you that next year, it will be very tight with that one percent, if no changes are made and it goes through. I don't want to be accused of instilling fear, or, you know, trying to make it sound like, you know, there's no going back, or anything like that. You could always just make this a point, maybe the point of the legislature is to take this to the voter, and so that's something that you would just have to plan for in the future, if you want to add public safety. And I think that, for the most part, it may be an easy sell for the public, right? You go to the public and say, we want to add two cents to your tax rate, because we want to add two firefighters to the books.
But how does that work, though? So we have to adopt a budget in September?
So that's a whole other thing.
You see what I'm saying? So then, you don't have an election to, you have to, you have to call the election so far in advance, so.
Yeah, so you would have, so you would have to, you would do a special election in November.
So you, but we'd have to have called it way before, right? As we're working with the budget?
Yeah, so that, that's been a topic of, we talked about it for thirty minutes this morning amongst the staff, the timeline, and there's a lot of things with it, because there was some conversation that the one percent was going to be one percent on top of the no new revenue rate. So then I was like, oh, that, that'll be fine, because the no new revenue rate will match, and we'll, we should be in line, and want, you know, half a penny, like, that's, that's, you know, but I'm not seeing that language in there. It's just saying one percent on the tax rate. And so, I know Ben and Court, like I said, he, he seemed like he was, wasn't in favor of the amendments, from what I could read, and then that he was sending it back to committee. So maybe they'll come back from committee with additional amendments, and then they'll go back, I, I don't know.
But just the timeline on adopting your budget, then?
Yes, so.
Because contingent upon elections, so then, how do we?
You'll be making a lot of estimations, because I don't get the certified tax rule until July.
I know.
And so, you could put it on the May ballot, but then we'd be, and, and you can, you can wait, but then we wouldn't be working with the budget, it would, we wouldn't be working, we could be working with the budget, but we wouldn't have firm numbers until after the election. So you would do everything, but keep those positions as, we don't know if we're going to get them until the election goes through. And you would just, my best way to, that I can tell you to do that, would be just to tie them with, like, positions that aren't current people, right? And, or current things that you need to purchase. They are things in the future, and so that way, if the voters say, no, we don't want that, then it doesn't really impact the budget that you're on. It's just going to be how we strategically go through the budget. But I have to have this conversation with you this evening, because I don't want you to come next year and say, hey, wait a minute, you didn't tell us anything about this one percent. Hey, we didn't know we were going to have to go to the voters to bring on new firefighters. Oh, we thought we were going to have enough money next year to be able to add the new firefighters. I want to make it perfectly clear, you don't have enough money this year to add the new firefighters unless you change your tax rate, and you're probably not going to have enough money next year to add the new firefighters unless you change your tax rate.
And go to the voters.
It would go to the voters.
Yeah, exactly.
And the voters, and then that may, and that may be, that may be the best option.
But, but if we do it now, Dr. Caldera, we don't have to do it that way next year, right?
Correct. You could just add it this year, if you wanted to, yes.
Okay. And I ask you what the financial implications would be for the homeowner, if we went up to add, remember?
Oh, man, I have it over there somewhere.
Yeah, I had asked you for that information.
Yes, it's, I put it in the city manager's update, too.
I think it was a hundred and sixty dollars.
Yeah, it was a hundred.
So from a hundred, to a hundred and sixty.
So a hundred, I think it was sixty-nine, yeah, I think it was like sixty-two dollars.
Yeah, I think it was a hundred and sixty is what I'm, yes, councillor Campos.
So, you know, we, we heard from one of the citizens about the lack of emergency personnel, in, in this case, the fire department, that we're relying on mutual aid a lot, as well as outside services for ambulances. And so, you know, I'm, I'm wondering whether or not, you know, the idea of, of trading things that we currently have in the budget, and, and I know it's, it may not be a, a popular topic, but things like, well, maybe we should forego the swimming pool, the, the swimming pool contract, and then reprogram that money of a hundred and eight thousand, which is the operating expense, for a new firefighter. And then, consider, for the colleagues and myself, okay, if then we were going to fund two more, what, what did you say the rate would need to go up to? Because I, I think I did hear you say that.
Yeah, so, she's bringing it to me. I wrote it down, and I left it on my desk. All right. So, if you go, so we're at point five one. If you go to point five two, that'll generate a hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven That average tax increase would be a hundred and twenty-three dollars and eighteen cents. So that's at point five two. So that's one firefighter, and probably like the other portion of the admin that he needs in the fire department.
What is it, one seventy-nine what?
I'm sorry. So point five two will give you an extra one hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars, seven eighty-nine.
Seven eighty-nine.
For the average tax increase to the homeowner at one twenty-three, eighteen. So that's one firefighter and, and, like, an admin, the other port, a portion of the admin. Point five three is where y'all were at, if you look at your tax history, where you were at in two thousand and twenty-two, before you decreased the budget by five cents. So you went from point five three to point four eight from two thousand and twenty-two, so going back up to point five three would generate two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, six fifty-seven. And the average tax increase to the homeowner would be a hundred and forty-six dollars and twenty-four cents. Again, these are just averages, estimations.
And when you say increase, increase from the point four eight, or from the point five one?
From the point five one.
Okay.
So that will buy, that will essentially buy you two firefighters and an admin, roughly, the other portion of the admin. Point five four will get you three hundred and forty-seven thousand, four eighty-three. That would get you the three firefighters that you needed, and that would raise the average tax rate to one hundred and sixty-nine dollars and thirty cents. And then you, of course, would have, I guess, a surplus, if you want to call it that, after you apply the firefighters to, like, a little over forty thousand.
I'm sorry, you said a little over forty thousand?
Yeah, I mean, it's forty-seven, so it's like, it's roughly like a hundred and four thousand for firefighters in general, but that forty thousand would also have to be added into your actual budget, because I need bunker gear, I mean, you have to pay for somebody to come on. So, some money would need to be added to the fire department operating expenses to, for training, and all the other additional stuff, and then you can maybe pay for another portion of the admin.
Okay. Did you have any other questions?
I'll wait.
Okay, councillor Roscoe.
Councillor Campos, it may not be a popular thing, but some of the feedback that I am getting from some of the citizens, like Mr. Yarnell, they do want us to move our city forward, and do what we have to do to make that happen, and for the safety and for the care for the city. I thank Mr. Yarnell for giving me a positive feedback on that. If we have to do it to take care of our city right now, I suggest that we do, but it's up to my colleagues.
All right, councillor Mersch. All right, Counselor Marsh.
I, I agree with, you know, in looking, in looking into the crystal ball and what the Senate and the House are going to do, Lord only knows, but it, there's such a focus on reducing property taxes that I really think we need to position ourselves as, in as good a position as we can this year. And so I think that it would be prudent to go above our, our currently proposed tax rate to get these firefighters on board, to get these additional positions, because I think we also have to look in, in our, you know, down the road where we're adding all these homes, we're adding, you know, a lot more citizens and property that can be, that we need to respond to, uh, not just from the EMS perspective, but from the fire perspective and everything else, that I, I would definitely support moving our tax rate higher to be prepared for the limitations that it appears the future will bring.
Okay. Yes, Counselor, Counselor Heil.
I just have two questions. This is on the average house. What is the average house?
230,000.
230.
So half are more than that and half are less, is that correct?
I'm sorry.
So half of the value of the homes?
I mean, it's ap, it's the average cost. I mean, I have some, I mean, in this room, you have some people living in houses that are half a million dollars. I mean, I, you know, I, we, we go on the average household, um, property value, some, you know, some people's property value. And then you've got, and it's also, all the exemptions and stuff are included in that average, um, the county gives us the average property home value, so it's not something I'm just making up. Um, and so that's how we give those numbers of what that looks like.
And we have the new houses coming online?
Yes.
So when do we see that tax money?
Uh, you will see that probably about four years from now, five years from now.
Long?
Yeah, because the houses aren't.
Three to five years.
Yeah. I mean, the, the, we have expectation that they'll come online, they are selling, it's not like they're just sitting there, um, you know, so, um, but in order for them to come on with consistency, to have them flow through, um, but it, you also have to note that when they come online, they're going to hit 911 too. Right? So do I wait for that tax revenue to come in before I add the firefighters? Or do I have the firefighters available for when they come in? So it's, what do you want to put first, the cart or the horse, right? And so again, this, you have a staff utilization study that you spent 70, I say you, the city spent $75,000 on, and it recommended three firefighters, um, one per shift. And after, they also put a formula in there and basically after all of your Seneca West, your SENA, your trilogy and the PDDs, they're recommending an additional three on top of the three for this, for this coming, um, as well as for police officers. I'm not touching the police and I'm not bringing them out and David's probably giving me daggers from back over there in the gallery. Um, but the reason I haven't brought that up is because we have had vacancies in the police department, we have a lot of turnover in the police department. I'm hoping with the salary market adjustments, that'll slow that down a little bit. Um, but we do run vacancies and so I would, I would never come to you and ask for more when I can't fill what I, my cookie jar of what I've got now. So, so that's the only reason I'm not pushing for that right now.
And we've been down an average of four police officers, correct?
Yes, yeah. And I mean, it's been on an average, and I will say this, we've doubled your police force since 2017. We haven't touched your fire department since 1985, 89? 82? What was it?
87.
87. I was, I saw the two fingers over there, I didn't see the other five.
I know, in my tenure, we've never added a firefighter, ever.
Um, and so, but, and you also have to take this into consideration, you've never added a firefighter, paramedic, and you've added three apartment complexes online already and the ridge subdivision without adding a firefighter. And so I can get on, you know, a whole.
Let, let me hear from Counselor Bolton. What do you, how are, how are you feeling about this?
I'm in agreement with my colleagues, um, as looking at it from, from both sides, I have to pay my property taxes, I don't get a break or any discounts or anything. It, I'm going to have to suck it up and, and, and make it happen because we do need it badly. So I'm, I'm on board.
Okay. Okay, I'm, if we're going to do this, I would, I would recommend that we go to the point 5.4 and keep the, we've got to balance our needs of our community. My concern about getting rid of the pool, we've already gotten rid of one pool.
Yeah.
Where are our kids going to go in the summer? I mean, we, you know, it, I just think that that's a, a quality of life that, that I think we need. And we have the 75 in the capital, so that's going to happen. It's just the 108 that, anyway.
This doesn't consider getting rid of the pool, I mean, this doesn't have any other getting rid of anything. This is, if you add, if you do point 5.3, that's 235,000, that's adding two firefighters, so you can meet in the middle. Or if you go to point 5.4 and go above what you've been at, um, that's 347,000.
But don't you need three for each shift?
Yeah, yeah, you should.
Yeah, so we have to have three.
I mean, I'm not, believe me, I'm not trying, Mike's probably starting to stare at me too.
I think we're in agreement that we should go to 5.4. Is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah, I, I don't, I mean.
What's your recommendation, Dr.?
So I'm not, I'm not really making a recommendation necessarily because I don't know what the Sen, I, I already, so if the Senate comes back and says, hey, 75,000 population is now the qualifying event and you'd be able to add the firefighter next year, I already know people are going to try to hang me at the stake. But it is my recommendation that you need the firefighters. Um, it is not, I mean, we've needed the firefighters since 2014. We built that firehouse in 2014 with the expectation of having not only just an additional one per shift, an additional two per shift back in 2014. And so we are now in 2025 and we have, the first recommendation was by Waters Consulting, you had a second recommendation, and they're still making the same recommendation. Um, and this council has yet to fulfill those recommendations that you paid good money for. So, you know, if you're going to pay for consultants, third-party consultants to come in and provide you that information, I, you know, I would, I would suggest that you follow the recommendations given.
But what we're going with this, in order for this to happen.
Counselor Arasco, go ahead.
In order for this to happen, what is, now that we're going point, uh, point 5.4, what is it, for us to make this happen, what is your?
So what are the next steps or what? So in order to make this happen, you need point 5.4 in order to add the three firefighters for this year. And I know that, I mean, if that's what you want to do, if that's the goal of this community, that's the goal of the council, is to add the firefighters, you have to go to point 5.4. I don't have the money in the budget.
Okay, that's what I knew to know.
We've already cut your budget. If you take a look at your.
Oh, no, we have, we don't have it at all, yeah.
I mean, you know, so.
We only had 11,000 left at a penny, going up a penny.
Right. And so I, again, I, I try really hard to break it down for y'all. Um, again, y'all broke down your capital fund reserve, we added 200,000 for a future ambulance, um, 200,000 for the pool grant, um, and then 75,000 for, um, the SC, the air packs for the fire department, I'm going to try to do the acronym. Um, and so again, if you, if that's the goal, you can do it this year. You can also wait and go ask the voters. I'm not running for office, right? Like, I'm not in here on a political plateau, I'm, that's not where I'm standing. If you think it's better to go ask the voter, then wait till next year and add your firefighters next year and go ask the voters. If you want to make sure that you have firefighters available before that happens, then I would do it this year. So those are your options.
Okay.
Just get it out of the way, just get it done now. Uh, as far as politically, uh, suicide, I don't care what's important now, it's, I'm in council now and it's important for me to make a decision for the people of Leon Valley at this time. If I don't get elected again or don't run, that's something else. But right now, it's important to take care of the people.
It's called leadership. It's called leadership.
Okay, okay.
That's what I say. I mean, you know, sometimes you have to do the hard, hard thing, you know? Uh, so all of y'all are leaders, I think.
I definitely agree that we need to take the action now to go to the point 5.4, get the three firefighters into our budget. And I know that this is not something that any voter in Leon Valley wants, it's what we need and it's a hard pill to swallow. I, I agree with your, your assumption there that nobody wants to see their taxes go up, but we've gotten ourselves into a hole and we need to start climbing out of it. And I think we need to make, take action now to do that.
Well, and I, I think the, the thing is, it's the legislature. The legislature is forcing us to make this hard decision this year, I think, because next year, I don't know what it's going to be like. I mean, as far as the election and I don't know. I mean, so Counselor Campos, I don't.
So I'm in agreement with, with what we've discussed here, but keep in mind that if we wait, there's a cost to these elections that we would have to go to the voters and it may run an estimate.
$10,000 each to 10.
10 to 15,000 dollars. And what's, what's interesting, I find interesting is that the state imposes these limitations on local government, however, they also put state mandates that are not funded on us that cost our local jurisdiction money. And that's what I find so difficult to, to reconcile. So, you know, I'm, I'm supportive of the point 5.4.
Okay. Betty, did you have something else to add?
No, I just won't be able to walk.
Counselor Heil, excuse me.
I won't be able to walk because people always stop me and complain about getting tickets and now they're going to complain about the taxes. So I'm going to, so.
I'm sure I'm gonna, I'm sure I will be splattered all over the place.
Okay. Yeah, no, I was going to open up a public hearing, so did you have anything else that you wanted to?
No, no, I mean, I, again, unless y'all want me to go through the budget presentation, but if not, you would just don't.
Well, let's hear, maybe, maybe the consensus is not to do it and so maybe that'll change the council's mind. So Mr., uh, Counselor, Mr. Martinez, if, let me open up the public hearing at 8:30 and ask if you have something to say, please come to the podium and state your name.
Brittany Martinez, Seneca. I'm in agreement with, uh, this, uh, movement to go to 5.4. I was going to say 5.3, but 5.4 is the right thing to do. Uh, in my opinion, this, next year's budget is terrible. They've cut, uh, just to balance it, I know the city manager has cut so much out of it, that it's going to be very rough on you guys. And, uh, thank God, we will have a little bit of a, we have, uh, a reserve, but I can foresee that probably every, every month, if not every two months, she's going to be coming for a budget adjustment because things happen. And, you know, right now, there's no money left in the budget, it's bare, bare bones. It was bare bones two years ago and this current budget is bare bones and next year's budget is even worse. So there's nothing left in the, in the pantry to, to go for. So, uh, uh, I support this and it's the right thing to do. And, uh, I know if I was still on council, I'd be voting for it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Martinez, for the support. Mr. Yarnell.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. As I understand it, the state statutes require us to take care of the health, safety and welfare of our citizens. And raising this to 5.4 and hiring on three new firefighters takes care of every one of those. It demands us to do this. You can't continue to not face facts and this is facing facts. So when they, somebody says, you raised my taxes, well, you, you had a gentleman come this evening and says he's had a call to the fire department twice and Leon Valley has not showed up. It's been somebody else. Well, that's not free. They don't do that on, out of goodness of their heart, they charge us, right? Is that right?
Yes, they charge you.
Well, I mean, they charge the city.
Well, it's a mutual aid, yeah. It's a mutual aid.
They don't charge the city anything for?
Yeah. I'm sorry?
I said, they don't charge the city anything for that?
No.
So we do have like a line in some of the other ones, but they just, those bills go directly to y'all. But yes, we have.
Mutual aid agreements.
You're going the right direction. It has to happen. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Who else? Ms. Chason, good evening and welcome back.
Good evening. I just wanted to add to that. What I find so interesting is that we have forgotten somewhere along the line that we are a community. We are all here living in Leon Valley. We want the best for our city, not just when it's in our back door or it's at our doorstep, but we want the best for our neighbors. For instance, my water bill was $6, sewer was 28 something. I willingly pay that because a lot of my friends in Leon Valley are on Leon Valley water and saw sewer. I mean, this is just it, I don't mind paying it. If 5.4 is going to help move us forward, then we've all got to suck it up because it's for everyone's good, including those that have not yet moved into our city. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Yes, please come and welcome. And if you'll state your name and where you generally reside, we love to see new faces in our chambers.
Well, thank you for referring me to the council. Um, my husband and I, we are new residents here in Leon Valley in the center development that you've been discussing. And, um, we have, we came to our first meeting, what was that, last month?
Yes, uh-huh.
And now again here and I'm really.
And what is your name?
My name is Tiffany Bradfield and his name is Donald Bradfield.
Tiffany Bradfield, okay. Thank you, Tiffany, and welcome. And your husband's name?
Donald.
Donald, how are you?
Yes, and I, we're personally glad to see you're revisiting this, um, this whole budget and increasing the tax because if that's, it's not just about the money, it's about the safety. And as us, my, you know, as we move here, we just bought a home here and we are going to age and it scares me to know that if I dial 911, I might have to be put on hold or maybe you don't have a firefighter or maybe the police don't come. You know, so, um, if, if it means that we pay an extra $5, $6, $7, $10 in taxes, then so be it because our safety is important. So I thank you for taking such a thoughtful approach to this budget and 5.4 it is. That's how I feel.
Thank you, Tiffany. Do appreciate it and welcome to Leon Valley. We're so glad you're here. All right. Okay. All right, so, um, uh, no, we'll have a motion the next time, or, you know, we do have it here, but, but I need to close the public hearing. Let me do that. It's 8:35. Let me close the public hearing and then move to agenda 7.2. Yes, we can still have discussion, you bet.
Will this money go just to hire?
Yes.
Firemen, nothing else, right? It won't go?
40,000 left.
Yeah. You don't have anything left, no.
Okay.
Oh, okay. I thought this.
I mean, there'll, there'll be some money, like, there'll be, um, so it's like, after you add the firefighters, I think it's like 40,000, but I got to add, I don't know how, I have to go back and do the math on the bunker gear and the training and all that stuff and add that to.
Brand for each.
Correct. Yeah. And if there's anything left, we'll add it to that 11,877, it'll go to your general fund reserve or we'll provide you some options at the next budget to allocate those funds.
Thank you.
Okay, so very good. Thank y'all very much for the good discussion. I know it's, uh, not an easy decision, but I appreciate each and every one of you, uh, listening and, and, and doing what's right for the community. So thank you. Uh, moving then to agenda 7.2, discussion and possible action on an ordinance approving the adopted, adopting fiscal year 25, 26 budget and associate capital acquisition plan. Now, it's different than what we've talked about, so.
Correct. So what I'm going to ask y'all to do, um, is to go ahead and somebody motion to, for me to update the budget with a point 5.4 tax rate. And then somebody will second that and you will take a vote on that. So you're going to add, you're going to, somebody's going to make a motion.
So do I need to go to 7.4 first?
No, no, you're just going to, you're going to ask.
7.2.
You're 7.2, you're going to.
The budget adoption, okay.
Somebody's going to make a motion for me to update the budget with a point 5.4 tax rate.
I would like to make a motion to update the budget with the 5, uh, point 5.4.
Tax rate.
Second.
All right. We have a motion by Counselor Bolton and a second by Counselor Arasco to approve the FY '26 budget as, with an update of, of the point 5.4 tax rate. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion does pass unanimously.
Now, we're going to forego the rest of the agenda. I, this will reappear on the 9/16. I'm going to re-note, or I'm not going to, but Carol is, going to re-notice first thing tomorrow morning with the point 5.4. We will update all of this information and bring it back to you on 9/16. It is cutting it really, really close for me because we have to adopt a budget by 9:30. Um, and so, but we will place the notice, we will update the budget and then we will bring back these same exact items, the ratifying of the budget, the tax rate, we will post on the homepage like y'all saw, the impact statement, um, and the property tax stuff back on the homepage of the website with updated numbers first thing tomorrow when we get them done, um, and all of, all of that. when we get them done, um, and all of, all of that. So we can notice the public as properly.
So seven-three, seven-four, seven-five will be moved to the next Agenda, September sixteenth with updated numbers and whatnot.
Yes, ma'am.
And, okay. So, yes, Counselor Campos, go ahead.
My question is, did this satisfy as the first reading?
You, you've already had the first reading.
Okay.
And so, um, we're gonna have to probably call a special.
Okay, that's where.
Um, just, just to come in, I only need three of y'all to kinda seal the deal on the actual tax rate. I just don't feel comfortable, um, y'all just adopting a point five-four when I didn't notice that in the paper, I didn't notice that on an agenda, I didn't notice that anywhere else. I think it's due diligence, we talked about transparency, for me to make sure that I give the public proper notice on the point five-four.
So, you're saying we have to have a special meeting to read it a second time?
You'll have to.
Okay, is that gonna be before the sixteenth of September or after?
No, 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 it'll be after.
Okay.
So whatever date will come, it could be a couple of days later, it doesn't have to be, it just has to be in a different day, I have to ask Art, but I think it has to be.
Well, we have to give three days' notice, though, right?
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah. It'll just, it'll be three days' notice. I mean, we're not talking the next day.
Right.
But it'll be a three-day notice, it has to be at a different meeting, it can't be on the same meeting.
Yeah.
Um, and so, uh, 'cause we tried to do, in the, we tried one year to do it, like, in the morning and one in the afternoon, and they said we couldn't do it, it had to be on a different day. Um, but we'll figure out that timeline for y'all, and then I will get that to y'all tomorrow when we work out the dates and the times. But yes, for the ratifying, for the adoption of the, ratification of the budget, I do think we have to have.
A second read.
A second read. I do, I will double-check with Art. Technically, the, we had a tax rate reading on eight-five, but it was the different tax rate.
The different tax rate, yeah.
So I do think you have to hold two more, but I will double-check with the city attorney because I don't, I don't know the answer to that, and I don't wanna put him on the spot this evening. Um, so if we do, we will call a special to do that, but again.
Oh, well, we do have a lawyer on, online.
Art's on right now.
Oh, Art's on, oh, okay.
He jumped on, um, but again, I don't, he, he's.
All right, well, we'll just wait till we hear from him then.
Yes.
Okay, very good. Okay, any other thoughts or comments from my colleagues on the procedure and where we're going from here?
I just wanna clarify, so we need to have another meeting to ratify the budget with all of the new calculations, but it has to be before the twenty-eighth because that's when we need to have the budget finalized?
Yeah, the thirtieth. The thirtieth.
Thirtieth, okay.
End of the month. Uh, the law requires us to have a balanced budget by September thirtieth before your new fiscal year. Um, but I'm getting the impression we're not gonna have much that changes, like, as far as the actual budget, maybe something will change between now and then about the point five-four. But for the main budget, I think we're a go, so I can start getting the staff prepared for next fiscal year, and we start doing all of that great stuff, so, um.
So, so you're gonna actually take the budget that we have and update it and add the three firefighters and show the economic, uh, show the financial, um, impact, right?
All of it.
The whole nine yards, okay.
We'll redo the, I say we, it's Carol. I, I just get to stand up here and sound smart, but she's the one that's going to do it, too, for you tomorrow.
Okay, so I just, yeah.
And we will get you, I will get that.
So you'll highlight that in all of the paperwork where we can read that? Okay, good. All right, sounds great.
Okay.
Okay, so, uh, with that, then we are, are going to forego seven-three, four, and five until the next, um, meeting, which is September the sixteenth. And so Agenda item number eight, request for members of city council to add items to future agendas per section three-point-one-zero-A of the City Council Code of Ordinances. And so, uh, Counselor Campos, what would you like?
Uh, in light of, of, you know, we covered the, uh, code enforcement and traffic last meeting, but unfortunately, there was a lot of bad weather at the time that we were having the council meeting. And also, our video feed, we, we had emergency power because one of the transformers busted. And so a lot of people did not see that presentation on that item. And so, I am, uh, bringing forward that we redo that, um, that item on that last agenda so that we can have input. I think, uh, as Crystal responded to some of the concerns of the citizens to be heard, she'll have more statistics. But, you know, keeping in mind that we, as, uh, city council members cannot, from my understanding, it is illegal for us to say, you cannot enforce certain laws, okay? So that may not change, but it's merely just an update. And, you know, this next door is.
You don't know where these people live.
I, I don't, I don't subscribe to it, and I, I'm not somebody who's gonna respond to it. It's gossip, and I'm sorry, it, it's not factual. Somebody complains on it, but they don't, they never tell what the actual facts are, okay? And so, that, that's my opinion, and that's what I'm proposing to put out.
Second.
Okay, well, what about the act, uh, it was brought up this, this evening about doing a survey?
It doesn't matter. You can't tell a police officer you can't enforce the law. So if you get a survey, of course, everybody's gonna say, we don't want citations for blocking of the sidewalk.
Okay, I just, I wanted that to be addressed because it was brought up.
Yeah, yeah.
So I wanted to be, I wanted to be.
Yeah, I think, well, Counselor, let's go. He just wants to put the information out there.
Okay, that's all. I just wanted to make sure that we're all on the same page.
We know the rules and regulations.
Right, I understand that they wanna do a survey to prioritize the law enforcement's direction and have them patrol and look out for su, oh, everybody wants that. Everybody wants patrol out there, monitoring, focusing on catching the bad guys instead of writing citations for blocking of the sidewalk.
And maybe adding it to the CPAC agenda for further discussion would be good.
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
I don't know if we're accepting any more citizens.
Well, I don't, we don't have any, have any more citizens to be heard, but that's why I'm saying it could be addressed at the CPAC meeting. Did you have something else that you wanted to add?
I didn't wanna add, uh, anything to the agenda, but I did wanna ask, uh, Dr. Cordell, last time Drew had indicated about the forty-five mile-per-hour sign, it has to be moved to our city line. Uh, do we have to put that on the budget, that has to make a motion on it?
No, so, um, Melinda's working on it. So Melinda and David are working on the sign. Um, it's a little weird, um, where its placement is, and so, uh, we're trying to figure that out. Uh, but we'll move it up. Technic, they're not gonna write a citation before the forty-five, so they'll wait for you to hit the forty-five line, but tech.
To thirty-five, yes.
Yeah, to the thirty-five line, at the thirty-five sign.
Right.
So that, you know, they're mindful of that. But technically, yes, it starts at the city line, um, but it's some right-of-way issue. And there was something else Melinda told me.
School zone.
The school zone. And so, um, it's a weird placement of the sign, so we're gonna try to see if we can add it to the school zone sign. We're trying to get permission to add it to one of the signs, and Melinda, I'm waiting to hear back from her.
Either there or to the city limit sign.
Welcome to the Lea sign, yeah.
Okay. And also, if I can suggest that, uh, for, uh, Mr. Campos lives at, there's a, a sign there that's flashing, but it's not until you get to that street. We can put it a little bit lower and alert, I think, uh.
In the speed sign?
Philip has mentioned it before.
You mean the speed sign?
On Evers, yes.
On Evers, yeah.
It, it is, it's so far up that by the time you, you know, you, you see that to slow down, it, the intersection is right there. We can have it a little bit lower where when people start, um, pressing on the gas to go faster, you could, hey, you're gonna need to slow when you get up there, and then maybe.
Let me take a look at that on the.
If you could, please.
Yeah, absolutely.
And that's all I have.
Okay, and just to clarify, y'all want the code enforcement discussion on the next agenda?
Yes.
Is that what I understand? Okay, so we'll add it.[1562.76]